Go ahead.
Hello, this is the first meeting of 2024 of the Lacey, City of Lacey Planning Commission. Instead of a call to order, since we have new people, can we go around the table and introduce ourselves? We'll start with Brian.
Hi, everybody. Brian Andrews, Planning Manager here with the City of Lacey.
I'm Shepard. I'm a long-range planner, also City of Lacey staff.
I'm Newmore. I'm into the planning commission.
Kieran McMichael, this is the start of my second term at the planning commission.
I'm Shannon Kelly Fong. I'm the Assistant City Manager here at the City of Lacey.
Alyssa Fontaine, City Clerk.
I'm Gail Madden. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
Amelia Kirk, just appointed, first time here.
Judy Doyle, Planning Commission.
And Skelly, I'm City of Lacey staff. I don't give all the minutes and everything for these.
Kieran, I wonder if you would read the land acknowledgement.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today, who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as the traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as it has today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of 1854.
Thank you. I'm looking for approval of the agenda and the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, we need to approve the minutes from December 5th, 2023. I know you have all studied diligent. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Still moved.
The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Is there public comment? Is there anybody out there?
I don't see anybody in the attendees list. One thing that I did want to mention is that we do have one of our new planning commission members, Spencer Seaman, as an analyst. He's on Zoom. Spencer, I don't know if you want to say hi and introduce yourself.
Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm excited to be here. In the middle of my children are with me. That's why I couldn't be in person today. And I'm hoping to get everything set up so that I can be attending in the future in person.
Thank you, Spencer. Are there, there was no, is there something?
Yeah, just for morality purposes, if you don't have any members in the public outside of ours, any council member visiting, so recommend this.
I'm sorry.
And then if any members of the public do have comments makes the planning commission, this is the opportunity to do that. You can do that by using the raise and function of the webinar. And we'll go ahead and bring you in. I don't see any attendees in the attendee list, however. So going once, going twice. As I said, I don't think we have any public comment.
Thank you. Are there any commission member reports? No. Don't see anybody raising their hand. Okay, thank you. Ryan, do you want to talk about the planning department?
The department report? Yeah, sure. I have one quick item, which is for the last approximately a year, our department has been without a department director as our community economic development director, Rick Walk, became the interim city manager. And now is the city manager full-time currently. And so in the last months, we've been in the process of hiring a new director. And my understanding is that person has accepted the new position or the new person has accepted the position and they will start Monday, January 29. And so her name is Vanessa Dolby and she's currently the Community Economic Development Director at the City of Brighton. And so she's somebody that is, went to high school here locally and is from the area. Been working for the City of Brighton now for fifteen to twenty years. And is now, I'm excited to come to Lacey. So good news that we'll have some additional resources in our department, the director, and for the Vanessa.
I'm glad that position still. All right, we need to move on now to the nomination and election of officers for 2024. And I think we have a vice president and a president, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, correct. The planning commission bylaws.
A little far.
State that there is, every year, there needs to be an election for a chair and a vice chair. And the role of the chair is largely kind of like what Gail's doing now, which is to run the meeting and be essentially kind of the face of the planning commission to the council in the joint meeting and those kinds of responsibilities. And then the role of the vice chair is to act in the place of the chair when the chair is not at the meeting. So for example, running a regular meeting if the chair was to be absent from a meeting. And so really, I think at this point, it's probably best to take first of all nominations for chair.
Right.
And then vote on that and then take nominations for vice chair and then vote on that. And you do have some members that are absent.
Sorry.
And not that you want to like pick on them, but you might. Is.
Eddie.
Yeah, so you've got Eddie, Daphne, and Jeff Gadd.
Right.
And those are the three that are not here.
And do they, I know Jeff has essentially three years and I don't know about, Daphne is going off. Is that correct?
Correct. So both Daphne and Eddie only have one year left.
One year left.
But these are one year for.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay, so from the floor, we will accept nominations for the vice chair. Don't all speak at once.
I'm gonna nominate Daphne for that. That's the vice chair, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Daphne Retsloff being the vice chair of the planning commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think she's elected. Battle teacher, not to show it. Okay, we'll now open the floor for nominations for the chair of the planning commission. Are there nominations? I am personally going to nominate Jeff Gadd.
Second round.
Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Jeff Gaddman being elected chair of the planning commission for the year 2024, please signify so by saying aye.
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 Okay. So, since they're not here, I suppose I should continue.
Yeah.
Or we can all go home.
Yeah, and what I'll do is I will, I'll reach out to both of them tomorrow and just kind of let them know the results. I think if anybody does not want to be there, the chair or the vice chair, they may be able to have the opportunity to withdraw.
Yeah, and go back. We can go back.
We can go back and.
Absolutely.
If the next meeting for someone, one of them is reluctant, amend the process and we can build through that again. I would assume that they're both, they're both very capable and I'm sure, I'm pretty confident.
It's fine, yeah.
But if not, then we can adjust if we need to do it the next meeting. But I'll jump to both Daphne and jump tomorrow and let them.
Thank you. Shannon Kelly Fong, you are home.
That is me.
That is you.
Well, good evening commissioners, and remind me never to miss a planning commission meeting because I'm the chair or the vice chair.
Be careful.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm also joined by Alyssa Fontaine, who I know has introduced herself, but is the city clerk. And we just wanted to come back and talk to you a little bit about some of the programs that we are implementing here in 2024. And I know some of you were part of this process when we came and got some feedback back in February of last year. And so council did adopt the advisory board stipend program. So we want to provide an overview of what that is and how we're rolling it out and what are some of the other parts of it. And then also giving kind of a refresher on the board portal, which I know many of you probably already use, but how that is going to be implemented with the advisory board stipend program moving forward as well. So I'm happy to drive the slides, Ryan, if we can get a clear development.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks. So we're gonna, just to go back a few. Like I mentioned, we're going to be talking about all of the above. And the one thing I did want to highlight is that just because we're here to present tonight, doesn't mean that you can't reach out to us in the future. So if you have questions about any of the program or the board portal or the demographic survey that I'm going to talk about, please reach out to Alyssa and be happy to connect with you and we'll get some more information. So just as a brief background on the stipend program itself. So the program is really aimed at offsetting incurred expenses for participating on advisory boards. So incurred expenses could be things like, you know, traveling to the meeting, not so much parking here in the City of Lacey, but in other places. I know that's come up frequently, internet connection, childcare, et cetera. And these are things that were identified as potential barriers to participation. You know, there could be community members who would love to volunteer their time and provide feedback and recommendations to the city council. However, due to other obligations or costs associated with it, could not. That being said, with this stipend program, we want to make it very clear that it's still a volunteer program. Everybody on the boards are still volunteers and these are just stipends that are received. So when we took a look at this program, when we were talking about those potential costs incurred, we kind of mocked up three examples of potential community members. And the idea of this was to show that, you know, kind of regardless of volunteer, there are costs associated with volunteering. So you can see here with our community member number one, who's retired, has no children at home, is a vehicle owner. They've got pretty significant discretionary time. They aren't going to be requiring childcare, but they still do have a distance to travel to the meeting. And so when you take a look at their time commitments, they've got, let's say a meeting runs hour and a half. They've got about twenty minutes of travel time and to get to and from is going to be about a gallon or so of gas. And so their total time is going to be 110 minutes and their cost to attend that meeting would be $3. When we look at community member number two, it's a little bit different. They're in the workforce from nine to five. They have children under five. They're single parents. They're also a vehicle owner. And comparative to our community member one, they've got much more limited discretionary time and they're going to require some element of childcare to participate on advisory board meetings. So when we look at their total time to be on an advisory board, very similar to our community member number one, when they're spending their time here, it's just ninety minutes and their travel time is the twenty minutes like our community member number one and they'd spend the same amount of gas, but they're going to have to get childcare during the meeting and childcare can be fairly expensive. So in this case, their total time commitment is the same, but they have expended $53 to serve on the advisory board. With community member number three, they're in the workforce, but their work varies. They've got children under ten and they're a transit user and they have no high-speed internet. So again, they've got somewhat of limited discretionary time. Their travel time to get to these meetings could be longer than our other two community members. And they may be limited by either internet access or having childcare requirements. And so when you look at the meeting time, it's the same, but the travel time is significantly higher if they are taking the bus. And they would have to, you know, potentially get childcare or high-speed internet to be able to provide their feedback as part of an advisory board meeting. So you can see their total time is a little bit higher and their total cost is around $50. So the program itself is aimed at City of Lacey advisory boards. So this is going to be for the Parks, Recreation and Culture, excuse me, Parks, Culture and Recreation Commissioners, Civil Service Commission, Commission on Equity, Historical Commission, our Law Enforcement Officers and Firefighters Disability Board, a Library Board, Planning Commission, a Youth Council and Lodging Tax Committee and any other ad hoc advisory boards or task force created by the City of Lacey. Participants to be in the program itself are going to need to opt into the program. So that's one of the reasons why we're here today is we're ready to launch the program as we want to walk through the steps of how you would opt in or opt out of the program. And this would need to occur on an annual basis. So what we're going to go over today would happen again in January. I might not be here in the meeting, but you'd get a very similar email from the city saying, hey, we'd like to know whether or not you want to opt into the program. For those individuals who do opt into the program, they would receive a $50 stipend per meeting attended for the advisory boards that I just mentioned. And this would be up to $500 annually. And we're on a calendar year from January to December. When I say meetings attended, I do just want to clarify that it is advisory board meetings like this one. It's not for other types of events that would be out in the community as the way the policies were currently. Stipends themselves would be distributed at minimum four times a year. And the way we are going to be helping get this data from here to our finance department is actually through our civic clerk portal. So Alyssa's going to walk through that here in just a second. I do want to note that stipends will need to follow all relevant tax requirements. The stipends also don't apply to our regional advisory board members or our council members who serve on advisory boards and to city employees who serve on advisory boards. There is going to be an annual reporting to the Lacey City Council on the impacts of the program. So we're hoping, you know, here in a couple of months, the idea is that we're going to be rolling out this program and have all of our advisory board members to opt in or opt out by the end of February. And that way we can provide an update to the city council on what the opt-in rate was and what our makeup of our advisory boards are currently. And so one thing I'll get into at the end of the presentation is a demographic survey that we are also going to be doing as part of this. And then providing that same report to council in the future, should they continue the program. The program itself is budgeted for 2024 and to continue on would need to be budgeted in subsequent years. And this is something that City Manager's Office, the Finance Department, and the City Clerk's Office are working really close together to implement. And I know also staff liaisons to our advisory boards are helping us as well. So, so thank you. So I walked through the policy pretty quickly. And so I'll pause here and just see if there's any questions from the planning commission and then we'll get into the technical side of it. Great. Well, I'm going to hand it over to the expert to talk on the other side of it.
Okay, thank you. So in your emails, roughly quarter after five today, there was an email sent that will be welcoming you to the opt-in program. So the email that's shown up here on the slide is an example of the advisory board stipend program. Some information on assistance, how to contact me, it will come through Smartsheet. So it will not see my name directly, but it is a form through Smartsheet. When you open this request, it will give a couple of question survey that we are asking for you to complete. So there is a question on whether or not you want to opt in or opt out. A selection is required and if you opt in, accepting the terms of the program. The contact information where we have street address as well as cell phone is an auto-populated for what we currently have. So if that is correct, there is no need to update or change anything. But if that information does need updated, this is an opportunity to update it and it will respond back to the clerk's office and we will update our files for you. You're able to send a copy of your responses back to you just for your record and we hope for any follow-up questions from staffs. So once completed, for those members that have chosen to opt in, they will get a thank you message confirming the choice to opt in. A subsequent email from our electronic payment platform, PaymentWorks, will be coming in the future. It's not an instant response, but this is the platform that our finance department uses to pay our vendors electronic payments. And this is where the stipend will be coming from. So some additional information will be coming from PaymentWorks on getting your account set up so that you may receive your stipend. Of course, any questions, please call me. Contact information, all of that's included. So as mentioned, the trusted communications, they will be coming from Smartsheet. It is through the City Clerk's Office, so my information will be attached to that correspondence as well as a future correspondence for those members who do opt in from PaymentWorks. And that is actually from the finance department and they will be initiating that once we get them all of the opt-ins. I'm going to turn it back over to Shannon for more information if there are no questions.
I'm not seeing any questions. I'll jump into the second part of this. So very similar to what Alyssa was saying about sending an email out, we're going to send a second email out that is going to ask advisory board members to take a very brief demographic survey. And, you know, one of the questions we had early on, some of the feedback was, when we were looking at this, was, you know, why would we want to collect this information? And so we really want to use this information to identify what could be some missing perspectives and to help us inform how we do our outreach and engagement efforts for future recruitments. It wouldn't be used by any decision makers for positions in the future. It would just be how we could get that information out into the community a little bit better to get more applicants for future positions. I do want to note that the two surveys that you're about to take are separate, so they won't ever be connected. So you won't have your demographic information matching up with your opt-in or opt-out information as well. So they'll be separately saved for any, for many personally identifiable information and then we'll aggregate that data and we'll use it to kind of take a look at, you know, are we reflective of our community? What might be some gaps in perspectives? Where might we want to do some additional engagement and outreach? I do want to put the caveat, though, that, you know, when we're talking about advisory board members, there are collectively who meet this program around fifty, so it is a very small pool. So even when you aggregate the data, just something to be aware of. So some of the demographic questions that we're going to be asking, we really wanted to make this something where it wouldn't take very long to fill out and everything is optional, so you can fill out what you feel comfortable filling out. But we're asking for age, and this is by ranges that match up with the census data. And most of these questions, we're trying to match up with census data information. Racial and ethnic identity, languages spoken at home other than English, abilities, annual income, homeownership, gender identity, sexual orientation, highest levels of education, and veteran status. And so this would be like our annual opt-in program, something that we would send out annually, the demographic survey to all of our advisory board members to get annual updates on what our advisory boards are looking at, if there's changes over time from our engagement efforts from the advisory board stipend program and something we'd present to council as part of those annual groups. So with that, are there any questions about the demographic survey? Great. I'll hand it back to Alyssa.
Right, so turning back into our civic clerk board portal, which all of you are familiar with and have been using. This is where we are taking roll call and able to produce and tie that into the opt-ins for the stipend program. So the benefits of the board portal, this is for board member access only. All your agenda meeting materials, annotations, and you can look at past and future meeting materials. So agendas, moved minutes and all of that. This also offers a public meeting side to the portal, so it is public-facing as well and gives a look into our live meeting process and making sure that everything is accessible. So some future features that will also be a part of the civic clerk experience is our electronic roll call and electronic voting. So that is something, I believe with the roll call, you all have available to you now if you do sign into the board portal. If you are not using the board portal, Aaron is doing that on the backend as well for each meeting. So civic clerk board portal, logging in looks like just a big grid where you can join the meeting that is for the present day. By joining the meeting, you are given an option for a roll call. This is where you're all present voting members or you will be marked up excused. And so saving that will feed into the meeting analytics and we will be able to pull attendance records and give that to our finance department for all those members who have opted in. The future feature that we talked about for electronic voting, once this is rolled out for our advisory board members, once a motion has been made and seconded and a vote is called for, Aaron will be able, or any staff liaison for the meeting will be able to cast the vote where it will pop up on all of your iPads and you will be able to electronically vote. We do strongly encourage a audible vote as well to assist the public as well as the staff liaison counting those votes. So you're able to select your vote and then click save and then we've got all that information. The vote results, as they do already, so whether you electronically vote or audibly vote, they are displayed for the public using the portal. This, it happens live during the meeting, but is also preserved for all past meetings. So if you go to the public portal and view a motion and a vote, it will give you the motion made as well as the initiator, seconder, and then the vote was. Logging out, this is something that, once the meeting has concluded, if you are logged into the board portal, you're given the option to leave the meeting. It will not let you join the meeting at once, but it will automatically log you out if you do forget after twenty-four hours.
Unless the meeting is still going on.
Hopefully it's not going on for a long time.
Well, never mind.
And then I actually, if I could, fine, may I borrow the keyboard? And we will do a brief tour of the board port.
Just kind of curious with our longstanding members, have you all been accessing the portal?
No, I had the issue selecting it.
Okay. You're aware that it exists?
Yes. I need remedial training.
Yeah, okay.
And we're happy to help with that, whether it's helping log in or some additional training.
All right, so I have logged into the board portal. I see a little bit of everything, obviously with my permission settings. You will all receive any commission meetings. You would like to browse other advisory board meetings, council meetings. The public portal is a great resource for this. And you can keyword search and conduct a lot of research and browse around. But for the board portal, you will only see planning commission. And here is our meeting this evening. Giving me a different view just through the settings here, but I would be able to join this meeting if I were a planning commissioner. So I'm just able to access it, but it will not give me the option to join and say I am present and voting as I am not an assigned advisory board member. So this is the board portal, as you will all see it. It will give you the agenda in a couple of different formats. You can view it. In the, I believe it kind of populated, it's very similar to a PDF as well as the packet, which I'm not going to download. Another viewpoint is you can scroll down and see everything here where it will give you an option to see any attachments, speakers, and then any annotations that you'd like to make on the meeting materials. Please note that they are not private. Everything is disposable. Everything is disposable and retrievable. So these are professional working and meeting notes for purposes of you serving on the advisory board. Minutes, same thing. Everything kind of mirrors each other. So you are able to go back and see minutes posted for meetings in which you have access to. So again, just the planning commission and then media as well, which I will not click in order to avoid feedback in case it starts something. But this is kind of your Board Portal view that you're able to access all your meeting materials. Are there any questions?
So right now, planning commission, mostly you can get your materials in your email. Is that what?
Yes.
Agendas, that kind of stuff. So it sounds like maybe Alyssa, there might be an opportunity for, you know, session at some point to... And I think, so we've kind of gone through this a little bit, but now especially since we, since getting brought on board as a way to kind of formalize the attendance, especially for the stipend program. We got brand new members. Maybe this would be a, you know, we could, at a future meeting or a future time, you know, schedule a time with you to kind of go through. And maybe it's a little less formal. You can sit down, we can all walk us through iPads and see if we can get things working.
Absolutely. We can set bookmarks, we'll get everything set up. The passwords for your account are all unique to you. So I can't assist there. But once we get you set up with your password for the Board Portal, we can absolutely link it to where then it'll be easy to access every time.
So we could be sending that through our email that we've just received.
So for the Board Portal, I will follow up with Erin and staff, and we will coordinate something to get you all a link for your accounts in email. But if we need to have some additional help, either onsite or just walking through, making sure we get you all set up, we will coordinate that effort.
Does the council use this as well? You guys are humble as it is.
They can train council members to do it.
So on the city council side, we'll be rolling out the electronic voting for the first time at the next council meeting. So we'll be learning that process too. And so we'll have a lot of good...
Big ways. So everybody's still going to work fine.
Oh, yeah, no, it's good.
Again, one of the, I mean, one of the other benefits of the new system is that we are going to be able to track the data for the stipend program. And Erin can still do that. So don't feel like you're pressured now to join the meeting and log in. But that is one of the added benefits is that we have a system and a way to do that so that we can send that information to our finance department pretty seamlessly, rather than having liaisons send us lists of who actually attended and all of that. So it is helpful in many ways. Commissioners, any other questions for us?
Did you guys get the email from about the stipend at 5:00?
I did, yes.
Oh, you did.
I'll just maybe make this plug as well as that, especially since we have some new members. Because really for us, to communicate with you all, it's really important that you check your email regularly on your iPad. So, you know, a lot of times, you kind of get into the habit of saying, well, you know, planning commissions, a few days away, I'll open my iPad and read the agenda and I'll read the materials. Well, sometimes we need to get ahold of you. We're giving you information. You know, it's good to get it in the habit of, you know, every once in a while, getting in and checking your email, just to make sure we haven't sent something through. Because, you know, everything that we do to talk to you is public record. The easiest way to retrieve that public record is through your iPad. So we want to make sure that we're, you know, not sending a bunch of stuff to your personal emails and being caged that way with your iPads and that specific CMTI calendar you've set up for all of you to do those communications.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you.
I hope the stipend program really works because I hope it will bring some new and different people onto all these groups. I hope. Good. All right, where are we? Ryan?
We are up. About the work programming year.
Since we have nothing to do this year.
You all have this on your emails, speaking of which. So I'm just gonna see if I can kind of share this and zoom in a little bit. So I'm just gonna jump around on this and use it as my speaking points here. So bear with me. Coming up on January 23rd, we have the annual City Council Planning Commission Joint Meeting. This year, it's going to be a little bit different in that it's a joint meeting that's going to be held not only with the Planning Commission, but also the Parks Board and the Sport Commission. And I'm forgetting that I missed. Right now, the idea with that is to kind of consolidate some of the joint meetings that were happening individually between those groups and the councils. And the idea is it's really an information sharing tool. For our example, what the Planning Commission has done in the last year and what they set to achieve kind of in the next year, two years, in my example. And my understanding is that this will be led mostly by our new chair. So... And we'd make that a little bit more of a dialogue. I think that's kind of the idea is that it makes it a little bit more of a dialogue between the Planning Commission and the City Council, rather than having it be maybe a staff-led, as it has been in the past. So that meeting is January 23rd, which is basically two weeks from yesterday. So mark your calendar for that. We'll do it at 6:00. We'll send a reminder via email when we get closer with the agenda. And it'll take place, it'll basically, we won't have the same meeting next time. So our regular meeting date would be January 24th, which is the night after that. So instead of meeting two nights back to back, we're just going to leave that one night at the council. So join us for that. But what I'm gonna do tonight is go through the focus of that meeting, which is the draft work program for the Planning Committee. So the Planning Commission, in past years, has set forth kind of its annual kind of slate of, a docket of different amendments to our comprehensive plan and our development regulations on an annual basis. And looking for, when we're developing this, that kind of at the end of last year, like talking internally that, given that we have a major update to our comprehensive plan that's due by June 30th of 2025, it makes more sense to make this a two-year work program so that we're shooting for the completion of that comprehensive plan update and all those different things that go into that, rather than just doing the one-year annual comprehensive plan cycle. And so what I'm gonna do tonight is go through, this was included in your packet, those different elements that will make up the two-year work program. You'll notice that it's, first of all, I'm going to talk a little bit about kind of how it's organized, which is by priority. You'll notice pretty much everything now is a high priority because most of this is state mandated work that will require to get done. So there are a couple that aren't as high a priority, but like our update to our transportation improvement program is still a requirement. We still have to get that done every year. And then an update to our development guidelines that is also at a medium priority. But everything else is high. This is organized in two major distinct categories. The first, at the top of the sheet that I'm going to talk about first, are the comprehensive plan updates. And then the second part, and the next main section, is our actual municipal code updates to implement the comprehensive plan. So we've got, so the way to think about it, the top part is the bigger picture, the policy part. And the second part, the code updates, is the implementation, the development regulations to get the work done that we set forth above. There's another column that says, you know, who's requiring us to do this? And essentially, everything is required by state law. The Growth Management Act sets forth the requirements for most of these to be completed. So with that, we'll start. Any questions on that before the joint meeting or anything that I said before I move into the actual descriptions of each item? Okay. So the first one is the conference plan outreach. So developing a public outreach strategy associated with our 2025 Conference and Plan. So there's some state law requirements now that requires to involve specifically participation of vulnerable populations and overburdened communities. And then also specifically requires engagement with Native American trials and any process. So obviously, when we set forth and move forward a larger comprehensive plan update, this is a significant effort that requires a lot of public outreach and a significant portion of the update to the comprehensive plan. We're actually, right now, in the midst of contracting with consultants that's going to actually help lead some of this work. And some of the ideas we got to, you know, last year around, you know, the last time we updated our conference plan, we had a relatively robust program. We did a lot of kind of road shows. We went to community events. We went to various HOAs and all those things that worked really well. This time, we really want to focus on some of those vulnerable populations and overburdened communities, those people that maybe don't normally participate in our processes. And so we're really hoping that a consultant can help with whatever it is and that can help us achieve that. We've also kind of kicked around the idea of maybe doing a mission of commissions. So having maybe a kind of stakeholder group that's made up of members from the Planning Commission, Parks Board, the Youth Council, the Equity Commission.
To integrate.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have better integration across all of our kind of various different committees that represent the city. So that's the right thing as well. And then lastly, a thing I'll mention with this is that we are excited. I think this is the first time ever that we're going to kick this off with some comprehensive plan visioning with the City Council. So the council's actually gonna probably late winter, early spring, kick us off with some community visioning process. Looking with the council to kind of set the ground where all this work's at. Next thing on the list is the update to the land use element. The land use element, the main items here is to revise demographics and projections, integrate various data, including economic and housing, continuing to focus on our sub-area plans and strategies, things like our AC Midtown, Martin Wake Four Door, Depot District SubArea Plans, and those kinds of things. Additional kind of things to think about. One is that our commercial zoning districts have been touched in a while. They haven't been updated in a long time. We have quite a number of them. And there's not a lot of difference in a lot of our commercial zones, especially between some of the community commercial and our central business districts and stuff like that. It may be time to consolidate and update those. And then also go throughout a community-driven process for rezoning. So as part of the process, what we're anticipating is that we're going to basically have a time where the community will be able to suggest potential areas of the city for rezone. So, you know, this doesn't necessarily have to be your property or, you know, it's just an opportunity for the community to come forth and say, hey, maybe take a look at something else in this property or is it, you know, and go through a community-driven process for that. Next is the transportation element. Our transportation element last was updated in 2012. We've done a number of studies since then, including the pedestrian and bicycle plan and the Martin Wake Four Door study that need to be integrated into that as well as the Depot District SubArea Plan. And then there, so that will be a focus. And then also, the state now has requirements to increase fiscal activity through our transportation plans, transportation elements, and then reducing our vehicle targets to reduce per capita vehicle miles traveled. So a relatively large update to our transportation element. Moving down the list, environmental element. So this is integrating requirements for, we now are required by the state to include a climate planning element. And we'll do that largely by integrating the first and climate mitigation plan into our actual conference plan, making sure that all the policies on the TCP with the first climate mitigation plan are integrated throughout all of our campaign elements. So not only are we making sure that we have a climate change element, but making sure that we address climate change through things like transportation, housing, and all that kind of stuff as well. We're also required to develop a climate resiliency summit element that basically helps improve climate preparedness, response, and recovery. So we now have to plan for climate disasters, climate, you know, climate emergencies, those kinds of things in our city plans. Also required to achieve, address achieving environmental justice and environmental health disparities in the community where they exist. We're also needing to inventory our critical areas and other undevelopable lands. And one of the major things we want to do as part of this too is update our urban forest tree canopy inventory that is contained in our urban forest management plan. So we did that when we updated the urban forest management plan three or four years ago in our need of updating that just to see where we're at. That basically is a map that shows how much tree canopy cover we have in the city and where we can keep track of that over time. The next item here is the economic development element. So based, an update, completing an update to the economic development element strategy based on an updated economic analysis that the city completed back in 2022. The housing element, a lot of recent state legislation here on the housing element. So we've got House Bills 1110, 1220, 1337. These are related to things like accessory dwelling units, middle housing, and housing projections. We've also, since we adopted this originally back in 2016, we've also, the city's completed a reformal housing strategy and a housing action plan that need to be integrated. So also identify and address policies to address undue racially disparate impacts, displacement and exclusion. Look at our, and make sure we don't have any, make sure that we do have the anti-displacement policies. And then we're also going to be wrapping up our strategies for manufacturing preservation that we've been working on for the last year to make sure that we're preserving for the reformal housing types. Next is the utilities element. This is fairly straightforward. And mostly, this is private utilities. So making sure that we're coordinated and consistent with things like telecommunications. Anybody uses the phone lines anywhere other than cell phones? And then cable. Those are the main ones that we coordinate all the utilities elements. We have our own utility plans, things like water, wastewater, stormwater, et cetera. Those are updated on a five-year basis and aren't necessarily part of this. An annual update to our capital facilities plan. So next Tuesday, the council is set to adopt our, the planning commission's recently recommended capital facilities plan. So that will be an annual update at that point. So not such a large update like we did this time, but an annual update to the capital facilities plan to keep that up to date. And then, as I mentioned at the onset, the requirement for, the annual requirement to do an update to our transportation improvement plan, our succeed plan that basically sets forth what transportation projects we'll be doing in the next six years. So that's a lot. Before I move into the code portion, any questions on the comprehensive plan updating our participants?
In terms of the transportation plan, are we going to involve intercity transit with a meeting with us or no?
Potentially. That was a big thrust of the last conference.
It was, yeah.
And it was mostly because at that point, we did not have transit service out to Hoxbury.
Right.
And so we were trying to coordinate that. Since then, we've, the intercity transit is now extended, fixed route service out to most of Hoxbury anyways. And that's not kind of the same issue. So we'll continue, we'll coordinate with them. But at this point, you know, unless we're talking kind of like service improvements like we had before, we'll have that direct meeting with them.
Anybody else have a question?
What is the anti-displacement policies? Is that something that we're setting? Or what is that, is that part of the House Bills?
That, yes, that's part of the state legislation. Basically says that, you know, it requires us to look at our policies and make sure we're not excluding certain members of the population from certain areas of the city. Maybe through our zoning, things like that, that would, you know, unduly displace certain members of the community.
How does that integrate with the... How does that integrate with the, with their policies? So if we allow a rezoning, that would cause like a mobile home park might be, is that considered a displacement?
Yeah, that's, that's a great example. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, it, an example of a mobile home park could be that, that we put in place policies that if you were going to displace them, if you're gonna tear it down, build something else, you need to re-find up some other place to relocate. Or, you know, build a, a mensurant amount of affordable units on that site as, as those that you are displacing.
And who carries the burden of that? The developer, the city or?
Correct, so it would be the developer. So it, it would be a, it would, it would have to be a discussion as far as what the appropriate levels of that policy are, what programs maybe the city can provide and what tools, you know, we would use, whether that be things like zoning and those kinds of things. So it could be a combination of a bunch of different things, but, you know, ultimately it's, it's up to the city to have those policies. We'll, we'll talk more about it when we, we get to this point, but manufactured home parks especially are kind of the hot button right now when it comes to that. Because number one, they are kind of a critical resource that one step away from a lot of people being homeless. But some of them are in very poor condition.
And so. So I thought exactly. Some of them need to be.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah, but what do we do about?
So how, how do you deal with people that need be, that are in those?
Right.
We've been struggling with that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yep, so great point. And, and some of them will be bringing forward through this process, a little bit more information on how we might be able to address that. Any other questions, concerns? So move on to the zoning part of this. So got this organized by some specific categories here. We'll just start first of all, code updates to implement the comprehensive plan. And the descriptions are broken down into two different kind of requirements. Those that are state mandated, that the state's requiring us to do, which is a lot of this. And then also those that are our own kind of internal, those that are our own internal, implement the comprehensive plan. So first of all, for state mandatory requirements, complete an analysis to ensure our zoning designations are consistent and implement land use designations that accommodate future housing needs by income bracket as allocated through our recently completed countywide planning process. So basically that set forth how many units that we need to have, which land use designation, the council was briefed on this. I don't believe that the commission was. But and set forth what those numbers will, will be. The next step and we're gonna work as a region to develop this is to look at our zoning and to see what, how many units our, our zoning can handle in each land use designation. Ensure that permanent supportive housing or transitional housing is allowed where residences and hotels are allowed. So that's a state law requirement now. Ensure, ensure that indoor emergency shelters are allowed in any zones where hotels are allowed. Again, another state law requirement. Real recent topical example of this is Big Four. Big Four is, is now running and the reason it exists in hotels is, you know, that the state said that hotels are a priority for emergency home shelter. And then ensuring that there are limits to the number of unrelated persons occupying a household or dwelling unit. So they're basically saying you can't limit who makes a family anymore. And that you essentially can have as many people in a dwelling unit as, as possible.
People want.
Yeah. There aren't, aren't state law limitations anymore to that.
And then, does that create? Issues, you know, like trying to put 300 people in one room?
It does, it does. So there's.
You'd have fire code, you'd have.
Those things. Right, but so you, you know, you still have sanitation, you know, those kinds of things. You still have, you know, building code, you still have fire code, you still have all those things that still apply. But the city would not be able to limit somebody from occupying, you know, having a certain number of people in there. They could, on the other side, limit things based on the fire code and the building code, but not necessarily all familial relations. Like if I had said, you know, oh, these are all, you know, all my relatives, it's not the same. Go in there, trade down, because, you know, it didn't mean the definition of what a family is.
I'm still a little confused where, where the jurisdictions stop and where they begin.
Yeah.
And what's to keep a church from saying, okay, we're now a homeless shelter having 150 people in there, 150 occupancies?
Right.
This seems like a very difficult to navigate topic that we need to spend a significant amount of time on.
Yep, yep. So that, again.
So sorry.
But they're, they're great questions and thanks, Ben, for your comment. You know, these are things we have to spend some time on to kind of figure out. Moving on to our comprehensive plan, consolidating our notice requirements, addressing many storage uses in the community. So right now, many storage is used is allowed in quite a few locations that maybe they, they shouldn't be. They're not the most beneficial use in terms of what they benefit, they provide the community and what we get in return. And then look at, and I mentioned this at the outset, the consolidation of some of our similar commercial zoning districts. Moving on to accessory dwelling units. Kind of the major things here is some of the limitations that we have on size will change. Some of the limitations that we can place on parking and those kinds of things will change as well. And then also this would modify our code to allow, right now it's accessory dwelling unit. If you have a separate mother-in-law unit in your backyard, you're not able to sell it separately from your main house. This, the state basically is going forward with what's called a unit block subdivision that would allow you to basically condominiumize.
Really?
Yeah, the mother-in-law unit so that you could sell it as a separate unit. And just have to go through the process to sell it back to it as well.
Question, is that, is it still the case that they can't impose these changes on neighborhood communities? Is that still intact?
That's right, yep. So there's, my understanding is the limitations for accessory dwelling units. The, the state legislature has said for any new developments that are coming on, these, there are, they can't regulate accessory dwelling units. So for example, if we had a brand new development tomorrow that came online, they could not limit accessory dwelling units. But any, it's not going to retroactively older developments that have within their CCNRs limitations on accessory dwelling units.
Still intact.
Yeah, they're still intact, they're still. Critical areas regulations, so these are things like, especially for Lacey, critical areas are things like wetland areas, steep slopes, you know, those kinds of areas that are difficult to build on, frequently flooded areas, habitat conservation areas. For us in Lacey, most of that is wetlands. That Lacey does not have a lot of critical areas other than our wetlands. So major thing here on the critical areas regulation side is that we need to update our wetland regulations to make sure that they meet the legislative changes the best we know science. This next one is the requirements of eleven, House Bill 1110 related to middle housing. We've done most of this. This is things like allowing duplexes, triplexes on lots of record, which we already do. We do that, we've done that through the low density zone consolidation. Either some, some tweaks that we need to do to this to, to meet the state law that we'll be doing, bring it to you here relatively soon. We're starting on this, we got a grant from the state to start working on this, this project. So stay tuned on this. I think the major theme on this is right now we allow duplexes or triplexes on any lot. This will actually allow up to a fourplex if at least one of those units is affordable. So that's kind of the.
Is it portable?
Yeah. And then the final one on the list is looking at our development guidelines, public works standards. This is, I believe was last updated about seven years ago. So these are our city standards for all new construction projects for things like transportation, roads, storm rated, sewer water, rainwater, landscaping, open space facilities and applies. So it's things like how wide are the sidewalks, how wide are the platewalk strips? How do you handle your stormwater, where does that go? Those kinds of things, those are all addressed through our development work standard. So seeing this light by, by public works on that side. So for that, happy to answer any questions, take any more feedback. This is like, I mentioned this will be going to the joint meeting with the council coming up in two weeks.
Any questions?
Do you have a list of priorities? I, I know they're mostly listed as high and medium, but is there a must-do in chronological order to meet requirement?
Pretty much all of those are must-do by July or June 30th of 2025. So we have pretty much, and that's why everything is a high priority. It's all, it's all stuff that we have to get done, we have to get done in the next 18 months. So at this point, pretty much all of it is a priority. And, and, you know, we're getting going as staff right now to, to make sure that we're, we're getting, getting going on all of it. So first, I don't have like a prioritized list because, yeah, it is. In past years, that's where the high, medium, low categories come in. Right now, everything is pretty much a high, because we're running these state mandates to get, get all this worked up.
Well, like I said, no work mixed here. Okay, Hans, you are on.
Hey. Share on screen here. So I'm gonna be presenting on neighborhood commercial districts. This is a project that we've been working on for a little over a year now. So for those of you that are new, I'm gonna run through a little bit of background on kind of what we've done up till this point and where we're at kind of today and what the rest of our timeline associated with this project kind of looks like moving forward. But as a little bit of background, this is, we have eight different neighborhood commercial districts located within our community. They're highlighted by the reddish numbers that you can kind of see on the map here. There's a few more in our urban growth area, we're not really focusing on those today, but that's in kind of the tan color zones. But the, the primary takeaway from this is that one of the characteristics of our neighborhood commercial districts is that they are located, generally speaking, around the periphery of our city. They're really fill the kind of commercial gaps and needs that are left behind by some of our more centrally located, larger scale commercial districts. So in character, these are typically kind of your smaller, you know, neighborhood kind of flask and errands, kind of running down the block, that kind of thing. They don't have a regional draw, but they're more local in scale and the types of services that's officially had and provided in character. But with that.
Are we defining large commercial or, or was, like for instance, I, I lived in, at the Lacey post office, I had business there and my neighbors had an issue with my business, renting out my house, police came and said, well, this is a light commercial district, so it's right to. So has that changed for the light commercial versus?
No, so this is looking only at neighborhood commercial districts. So that is our kind of lowest intensity form of commercial districts that we have within the community. We have many other types of commercial districts, including that one. So we have neighborhood commercial, we have community commercial, we have some kind of woodland district is another example. We have more industrial oriented style commercial districts. There's quite a few different designations that we have in the community. This is just one of those that we're looking at specifically as part of this update.
So an example would be like 37th or Molino College, the farm. That's a, that's a neighborhood commercial node there. Another would be the, yeah.
The Almond, yeah. Yeah, Red Bull, Red Bull, yeah.
So those are some of the neighborhood scale.
So I'm gonna look, what is our goal as far as, will we change into commercial or allowing them?
Yeah, so this, this project was really, this update was born out of a lot of the attention that was gained around Meridian Market. So that was, Meridian Market is located in a, one of our neighborhood commercial districts, number two on this map up there for reference. And it had to do with a, the conditional use of a gas station going into one of these districts that had mixed feedback from the community as far as whether or not that was something that the community wanted to see at that location or not. So following the outcome of that project, the council gave direction for staff to look at our neighborhood commercial districts across the community and really kind of do an assessment of how they're performing. Are they really accomplishing the stated intent of these districts? And if not, what changes might be able to be made to better meet the intent of these districts and kind of the expectations of the community for what the, what role these districts play within their neighborhoods? It's, it's really where this update kind of started from. That answer your question or?
I'm not sure what the planning mission role would be amongst that, because it sounds like more of a judgment call based on, on the building department, whether or not this should be allowed for this district or not.
That was the problem. That was the problem. There were, there were, there was a structure in place that did not allow the people making the decisions to take the input from the community. They were bound by the existing standards to approve something that the community didn't want. So they've spent the last year listening very openly to the needs of the community in an effort to modify what could be, what could happen in the future.
What's acceptable.
So this Meridian Market is a gas station.
Right.
And the goal is to make sure that never happens to another community.
Okay, so, so again, the planning commission would do what at that point?
Yeah, so so far, working through this process, the planning commission has served both as an advisory board to the council, but then also as a sounding board when we're collecting information from the community, consolidate that and have been representing that back to the planning commission, gaining additional feedback and working that up the chain essentially. So we get feedback from the community, we assess that information and present to the planning commission. Planning commission provides additional guidance and direction as kind of the, the planning commission's representative community voice in that sense. And then we take that and move on to the next stage and kind of zero in on what that update, what those changes might be with.
It was a really meaningful exercise. They went in very deliberate places and got very specific feedback from people affected by the change. And it was a very thoughtful.
Yeah, I do actually have a couple of slides on the process that we've gone through up to this point, so I can run through those.
Be wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, so starting in really late winter 2022, early 2023, we, was when this project initially kicked off, which was mostly following the approval of the gas station at Meridian Market. And the direction from the council at that time was really just to kind of take, take a step back and broadly kind of seek feedback from the community as far as what are they actually looking for in these districts? So far, what we've been implementing hasn't been terribly successful when you're looking at it in comparison with the intent. So kind of taking a step back, really kind of removing ourselves from the discussion, letting the community really just kind of provide that guidance and then seeing where that guidance goes. So early on, we had around 150 in-person participants as part of the initial kind of project kickoff. And that was a hybrid kickoff, so it took place both in-person, in-person opportunities to participate, but then also online as well. Throughout the course of this update, to this point, we've had around 875 online participants providing feedback in some capacity, whether or not that's through surveys or email, but reaching out, providing additional feedback through that. Throughout the course of this, we've kind of used social media, newspaper publications, HOAs, contacts, very different distribution lists of people that have expressed interest and want to be kept informed about this topic moving forward. We maintain a list for a lot of different projects that we do. So anytime that there is an update, people can kind of just automatically be informed about those subjects that are uniquely interested to them. And then also the city website, we set up a city or project specific page as kind of a, a library for all of the materials that we've collected, all the feedback that we've collected, all the findings that we have throughout this process. And upload it to them there, so that's always available for anyone to access and kind of review and find out where we're at in the project and what our findings have been up till that point. We also reached out to the youth council and got feedback from them as well as part of that. So that was early on as just kind of an initial kickoff. Moving into spring of 2023, we took all of that initial feedback that we had heard, really kind of reviewed it for common elements. Uh, really kind of reviewed it for common elements, other themes that we can kind of build upon, uh, what those trends are as far as the feedback. Uh. Yeah, so some of the high level uh feedback that we did receive is that the intent of these districts is popular, but in practice, we're not really currently accomplishing them. So we have this kind of high level intent of what these districts are supposed to be, but. On the ground, when we look at individual districts, they don't really match that intent very well today. So what's being developed versus what we're envisioning aren't matching. It's kind of the, what we heard there. Uh, we also heard a lot of information about uh vehicle and shipping traffic. These are primarily neighborhood locations that these districts are located in. So when those shipping trucks are coming in and there's people walking on streets or biking. Uh, or just local vehicles traveling on these roads, there's that interface there. There's a lot of conflict that is kind of created around that. Some of that is attached to uh the uh industrial sites to the, to the north of our community, or in the north of our community, I should say. Um, so making that distinction between feedback that was targeted specifically around neighborhood commercial districts and just in general experiences. There was some of that that we heard. Uh, also, another common theme that showed up is quality food and produce options within these districts, specifically one. Uh, located north of I five, uh, north of I five is currently kind of. Might be considered a food desert. Uh, there's not a whole lot of great grocery store options on that side of I five. So most people are traveling to. South of I five to get uh their groceries. So that was something that I heard a lot about. Uh, these districts are viewed as a potential avenue on how we might be able to introduce more food options uh north of I five specifically. Uh, we also heard comments about uh just general kind of design requirements, so things to do with square foot and setbacks. Uh, not really being adaptive enough to each location so that they're kind of rigid in their application and. Each one of these locations kind of has a little bit of a different thing going on. So trying to find. Use the code that we have that's clearly written isn't really doing a great job being responsive to those. More uh unique instances that are taking place each one of these locations. Uh, and then there was some general discussion about the relationship of residential uh units, uh, both on these sites and then adjacent to them. So currently, as our code is written, uh, residential units are only permitted above ground floor commercial. So these sites are. Their first priority is to be a commercial site, but in a neighborhood setting. Um, so there was discussions about potentially allowing residential uses on the ground floor. Uh, so that was one of the topics that we heard a good amount of information about and how the. Addition of more residential units in close proximity to these commercial sites. Has the opportunity to kind of further stimulate the commercial uses that are also taking place there. Uh, and then with the added bonus of potentially providing some buffer between adjacent. Neighboring residential units and the commercial component of these sites. So. Had some discussions there, had some feedback that would indicate that the community at large is generally interested in uh residential. Being permitted on the ground floor in a broader sense than what it's currently committed with the new sense. So we'll talk, we'll circle around to that a little bit more here. Um. We also did some business and tenant outreach. So we actually went door to door. Uh, at every single business uh that's located and operating within one of these districts. Uh, and just did some general outreach, encouraged uh business owners. Uh, site managers, tenants, property owners, prospective developers that may own some of these sites to participate in this process. We also did kind of a bit of an education campaign as part of that. Uh, when speaking with uh. These members of our community, uh, there was actually a bit of a surprise that they were even in these neighborhood commercial districts. A lot of them just weren't familiar with our zoning. Or that neighborhood commercial districts had anything to do with where their site was located. So. Uh, also, as part of those discussions, we did a lot of just kind of information sharing, uh, did a lot of introductions to our department. Uh, I also went out personally with our economic development coordinator and introduced them to some of the other programs that we have out there to support business development, not nothing. So. We got a lot of great feedback. Direct to this, but then also just did some information sharing as part of that outreach as well. Um. The feedback that we heard on that was had to do with kind of uh market driven uses. So right now, as our code is written. It's pretty strongly in the, we're gonna list every single potential use that's out there and if you're on that list, you're permitted and if you're not, not. Um, and kind of moving away from that a little bit and being more design oriented, a little bit more driven so that there's some flexibility with types of uses. Uh, because. Hard to predict in the future what types of uses make sense in these districts. Uh, and we can, I'll touch on that a little bit and a little bit later here. Um. And then just flexibility, so flexibility in. What goes in there in design was also something I heard a little bit about. And then, uh, moving into fall of twenty twenty three, uh, one of the questions that we asked as part of this outreach was. Are there example districts in other communities uh that might be kind of ideal versions of what these neighborhood commercial districts within our community could be modeled after? And the reason we asked that question was that sometimes it's easier to point to somewhere that you've been, that's already developed. That has a good example of what you're looking for instead of trying to talk hypothetically about what a setback might be and what makes sense in different locations. So. We asked that question, uh, I think we had in total over a hundred different locations that were kind of identified through our outreach. Um, we sorted those based on the ones that are most frequently referenced and then also compared them based on. Uh, common characteristics with Lacey. So population within these locations that are of economic development, there are some other metrics that. Further kind of refined those into a list that did have some pretty clean uh comparisons with. Where Lacey is today, but then also where our projected growth is in the next ten to twenty years. Uh, and then. Yeah, so some of those commute or locations include University Place, Bont, uh, the Dr. District, District, Point Rosten. Uh, Wildwood and Braves and Olympia, Fort Townsend and Fairhaven and Bellicamp. So there were many more, but those were just a couple of examples. And then. The nice thing about these districts is that uh each one of them exists within a city that has code attached to those districts. So. We can then go in and look at the specific code that led to those districts being developed in the way, to an extent that they were developed. Uh, so we looked at things like design elements, uh, their intent statements, permitted uses, access and how they use public spaces. Uh, and then relationship with housing along with some other metrics and kind of compared those to our code. And tried to figure out what common characteristics existed within each one of those districts that might be able to borrow and implement within our own. Um. And then, yeah, in winter twenty twenty three, and at the end of this last year, moving into this year. Uh, we took all those findings, uh, summarized them, put them all together and wrote up a draft of what our updated code could look like. Uh, we broke that out into two different sections, one being the design elements, so kind of more site characteristics, so setbacks, height. Uh, number of units, for footage, that kind of thing. And then also still looking at num- uh, types of identified uses, but doing more of a. Umbrella approach. So instead of listing each, I would do so. Right now, as an example, we have uh video rental. Stores or something that's still written in the code today.
Yeah.
Uh, we have. Didn't, didn't age well. Um. But yeah, uh, we also have things like uh camera code, uh. Film development, things like that, that just don't necessarily make sense today as something that we should still be listing, but so kind of taking a step back from that. Instead of using those categories, maybe using kind of more of a broader. Commercial uses are permitted, provided they meet these design characteristics. So. More flexibility as far as the type of use, provided they meet the kind of. Characteristics that each one of these locations, neighborhoods is kind of located in, if that makes sense. Um, we did some hybrid meetings. We've come back to the planning mission quite a few times throughout this process, kind of sharing information along the way. Gaining additional feedback. Uh, last night, we actually met with uh the city council and shared. Pretty lengthy summary. This is the beginning of that summary. I'm not gonna go all the way through it tonight. Um. Yeah, we also did internal department reviews, so making sure that. The code that we're developing is consistent both from a planning perspective, but also from a building perspective, from a transportation perspective, from a utilities. We want to roll something out that's consistent across all of our departments. So it will be successful. So we did internal review. Um. Yeah, we also took it to a couple of different committees and got all that feedback. Um, and then last night, as I said, we took it to city council. Uh, we're joined tonight with the council member Cox. Um, that I might ask you to share some of your thoughts from our meeting last night and secondly. If I continue talking and then uh maybe you can share some of your uh thoughts of last night with us. Uh, and then that brings us to where we are today. Uh, so that's tonight's meeting that's highlighted up there. Um. Following tonight's meeting, I'm hoping to get some additional feedback from you. We're gonna do the boring or. Less exciting part of the process at this point and actually look at the code as it's written. So I apologize for that advance. That's a pretty dry. Um, but that's where we're at in the process. So that's what we've been working towards. Uh, we've historically had more political slides to work with, but this is where it gets down to actually reading the text as it's written. Um, and then following that, we're gonna do a month of community outreach and distribution of the draft code as it's written. This is a draft.
Is this what you, is this what you meant, right?
Yeah, yeah. So, and that's, again, this is gonna be, I'm trying to know, I may have gone off the community at this point, but this is just another. Every time that we take a step, we want to go back out and confirm that indeed we're moving in the right direction, that we're tracking, that we're hearing correctly. That this is in fact what people were trying to identify when they were communicating with us throughout this process. Um. That's gonna lead to a planning mission public hearing on February fourteenth. Uh, so the community is gonna have a month to review this code as it's currently written, or as it shortly will be after I gain additional feedback from you guys tonight. Um. We'll have that public hearing on the fourteenth, uh, and then following up what the feedback is at that hearing. Uh, we'll come back to you guys in a separate meeting, uh, potentially gain some uh additional feedback or maybe a recommendation to the council. To take that draft code at that point to the council. At that point, council have the opportunity to review and then potentially adopt. Questions?
Do you feel that, um. We have this commercial, we have urban development, we have affordable housing, et cetera, whereas the European. Model is more of combining all those three together. Like you'll have a factory at the bottom floor. Homes on top and. The commune, their commune is literally on an elevator. Which saves on traffic, et cetera. Um, have, have we ever looked at that sort of model whatsoever or? Have it versatility?
That sounds like.
More of a hybrid.
Yeah, so to me, that sounds like what might be called mixed use. So, uh. Currently, actually, within our neighborhood commercial districts, residential units are permitted. Above ground floor commercials. So that is a type of use that actually is committed today within these districts as the code is currently written. That said, we're not really seeing that implemented. Uh, so one of the things that we looked at as part of this is why aren't we seeing that implemented? When it's currently listed as an allowed use.
That, that would be my question as well, because that could be two, two birds with one stone, you know, you're, that's your affordable housing as well as jobs. Running from the industrial.
Yeah, I definitely agree.
And did you have a question?
I, I did. Um, I'm just thinking about. Public engagement in holding a public hearing on Valentine's Day. I don't know if housing supersedes, you know, the tradition of spending time with loved ones. I didn't, I, I know that we shifted to Wednesdays. I don't know if it was originally scheduled for the thirteenth. Is. That something that might be. Uh, updated to encourage more participation from the public or is it set in stone?
So I guess I can begin your answer to that and then I'll let Ryan take over. Uh, we are gonna be running this for around a month. Uh, so we'll be once we've concluded and I've collected feedback and we've kind of worked that into this draft. We'll be distributing that here ideally by the end of this week. Uh, so we'll give the community uh a month to really kind of digest and look it over. And they can provide feedback at any time leading up to that. Uh, and then also that period is an opportunity to be in person and speak directly to the planning commission. Um. So there's different avenues to provide feedback. That's just, I guess, the data we fell on with that change in schedule.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna say is that February fourteenth is the, the, you know, the. Opportunity to take public comment in, in person, but there will be opportunities to provide feedback, you know, throughout that, that part. That will be, you will take everything by. Written, you know, by email, those kinds of things and provide that to the planning.
You're, you're just trying not to meet that figure.
I have. An issue, but, but yeah, no, I was just thinking about the county falling itself on funds, you know, how, how.
The way people will show up, yeah. Jeff pulled us out for having a meeting on Thanksgiving week. And we changed that. And so that was, that's a fair point.
That this is my book, no. I would happy, happily be with you.
So part of, also part of the outreach that we've done to this point, anytime that we've received feedback from folks, we've asked for their contact information. Uh, and offered an opportunity for them to kind of opt into this process. So. We're gonna be using our usual avenues of kind of public notices and the website and social media to get this information out, but we also have. Quite a few, a couple hundred to say for at least uh folks that have identified that they're interested in this subject and we have their contact information. So we'll be actually sending this. As part of the outreach directly to those folks that have identified this as a subject that they're interested in. I think through all of those avenues. We do expect to get pretty decent traction as far as those folks that are still interested in. It's been a long process, so we have. Lost some folks along the way, uh, but those that are still pretty happily interested in it and really want to see where this goes. Uh, we'll be able to definitely connect directly with them.
I'm sorry, I had one more. Um, traffic mitigation for. These proposed areas. Example would be like Hicks Lake. I live on Hicks Lake and we have the army complex behind and then. You know, the signs say twenty-five hundred more cars per day. No.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, that's a great question. And actually, so I'm. Uh, breaking studying the presentation I used yesterday a little bit here. Um, so. This is actually a slide that uh we ran through yesterday and what it is, is so. Neighborhood districts, uh, everything we're talking about tonight is specific to neighborhood commercial districts. That said, we have. A larger set of design requirements and design review. That all of our commercial districts, all of our residential districts also have to be in alignment with. So that includes things like. Stormwater, environmental performance standards, off-street, on-street curving, uh, landscaping, multifamily projects, uh, commercial design elements. So your question about transportation is covered both in this and in other sections of our code already. So everything that we're talking about today is kind of in addition to those overarching set of codes that just exist. Uniformly across all of our districts. So. Tonight, we're not gonna be talking so much about transportation specific impacts, but it is covered. Just in a more general sense, anytime that there's a commercial development that comes in. Uh, and those don't change depending, uh, based on what the outcomes of these discussions here tonight are.
And, and the, getting back to the purpose, why these, these districts need to exist in the first place is that they provide day-to-day services for people in and around where they live. So the idea is, is that the, the, the majority of the trips coming to and from these neighborhood commercial areas are gonna be very local. They're gonna be the neighbors that are accessing them. Um, and then it's also going to uh save. The trips from having to go into the larger commercial areas, um, because somebody's able to, you know, get a gallon of milk down the street so they don't. You can run to the grocery store that's three, four miles away. Uh, so that's, that's kind of the idea with me. So. Um, you know, they're not high traffic generating uses, you know, generally they're, they're neighborhood scale of commercial areas that certainly give the business less than stuff.
Sorry for all the questions.
No, this is what we're here for. This is, this is great.
Questions.
It's fine. Yeah. Questions are why we're holding these meetings is so we can have these conversations. So this is great. Um, I am gonna stop sharing this unfortunately and go into something that is gonna be a lot drier.
Less fun.
Yeah. Um, let's see if I can do this here. Yep, we stopped sharing and pre-shared. I did, sorry. I completely skipped over that. Um, I might provide a few of my quick takeaways and then see uh if there's more feedback that you have on that. Uh, Rick stopped in, wanted to remind me about a couple of the conversations that we had, so I want to make sure that I say those quickly. Um. Sorry. You should go first. No, I, I completely skipped over it, but uh, yeah. You have things.
Just, just a couple of the. Sitting on the council. Which are really painful process. They do then all this. Starting in market and, and. Council really felt like. This time. Happens before speeding. With the neighborhood, you're not, didn't have the quality of life. And still respecting the role of. Probably some of these of that. And. The need for is having walkable cuttings and things. It just. So we, we. How, I guess our planning staff really did a long haul with this and see what we can do. Through this process so that. As you said, you know. I mean, if they were hosting us in this. Really hard emotional experience again. So. Absolutely, please. That's what I saw and a lot of it seems to have flown, flown from the tiny commission. So I. Hope you all feel good about that too. Really like the state of the world of. Taking this zone and then actually. Making it work. And even their, their market forces and things that, you know, we can't do. And even their, their market forces and things that, you know, we can't do, all that much about. But I did, you know, too, many incentives that they talked about. And all this, the kid hook shape that so that we have a more comfortable integration between, uh, day-to-day state projects. So he has kind of the, the conversation.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, so again, we're gonna be looking mostly at the draft written code. Based on all of the work and feedback that we've received to date. So some of this isn't gonna have the justification of where that's coming from or why we arrived on the wording that we did. But if there, there's any questions, please jump in, please ask those questions. And I'll happily provide as much context as I can recall from where that information's coming from. A few quick things on the meeting from last night. A couple of the topics that were discussed a little bit more length. Uh, so the north versus south, uh, discussion, uh, specifically kind of as it relates to kind of food, uh, on one side of I five versus the other. That was brought up, and also there's some, uh, feedback on whether or not we should look at districts located north of I five compared to south of I five. I think with, we brought that question to the planning commission at our last meeting, and the general consensus at that time was no. From that, uh, conversation, I shared that with the council. Uh, there was some opinion on both sides of kind of which, what's the best way to approach that, uh, topic. Uh, with the combination of, uh, design elements that we're introducing, kind of the shift and greater emphasis being placed on design elements. And more flexibility on the, uh, specifically listed use side of things. Uh, that seemed to address a lot of that conversation and seemed to work well. Uh, the caveat, uh, once we kind of ran through all the design elements, the one remaining one that seemed to kind of stand out a little bit, uh, was gas stations. Uh, so we do have some information in here that we'll run through on gas stations and kind of where they stand after this process. Yeah. We did go ahead and remove conditional uses, uh, from, uh, this section of code. So right, uh, now as it's currently written, we have permitted uses, conditional uses. Uh, I don't think we actually have, and everything that's not listed, yeah, prohibited. And we don't actually name anything in prohibited as it's currently written, but what we do say is that anything that's not listed in our pro- Yeah, getting mixed up here. Anything that's listed in our permitted uses, anything that's not listed in there is essentially prohibited. Uh, it was kind of how it's been approached to this point as far as how that code is written. And then there's a, a couple other, uh, highlights that I'll show in here, uh, that are in addition to the draft code. That, uh, has been distributed to everybody, uh, so far. But at that point, I think I'm gonna start scrolling through what's written here. Let's see if we can bring that up. So this first section is our permitted uses. We're gonna start there. Um, again, these are taking a step back from trying to anticipate and list every single use that might exist within these districts. And taking a higher level approach where we list residential uses. So the first line item is residential uses above ground floor commercial, and that's really the only reference to residential uses. As it's currently written in our code today. Um, we came back and added some additional code based on discussions and feedback. Uh, two additional lines, one that talks about ground floor, uh, multifamily residential uses. Uh, we introduced this really, uh, twofold. One, it supports the primary use of commercial uses within these districts. So more residential uses in close proximity to these commercial zones. Has a potential to kind of further stimulate and support that commercial use. Um, we wanted to add that in, and it also provides a potential buffer. So if you think about a large neighborhood commercial district, maybe towards the center of that is the commercial component of that use. It gives the opportunity to cite some residential uses, uh, on the periphery of that neighborhood commercial district. That kind of further buffers maybe other adjacent residential uses, uh, that are still located in close proximity to the site. So it's kind of a, a transitioning, further transitioning to that commercial use, a little bit of a softening of those kind of more intense uses within that neighborhood setting. The caveat with this is that we wanna make sure that there is still that commercial use and it is prominently featured within these. As that is kind of still the primary intent of these districts. Uh, so the caveat with ground floor commercial is that it has to be at least fifteen thousand square feet of commercial use within these districts. In order for developers to-
Total.
Oh, correct. Yeah, that's not, not to say in that's encompassed within a single building, but just across any given neighborhood commercial site. But it still has to meet that commercial element requirement. But at the same time, there's still more flexibility in how that is integrated into the site and where that residential is located in relation to that commercial. So, uh, and then we also added a line about live work. Uh, so we're starting to see a little bit more of this show up.
Yeah.
Uh, we have surrender apartments, uh, in town, which is a good example of that that was recently constructed. It's a live-work style, uh, apartment building. Um, and we wanted to encourage that type of use, but we also wanted to recognize that we still want kind of a, more of an anchor tenant, if you will, in these locations. So, uh, allowing that or identifying that as a safe use, but wanna make sure that at most it counts for five thousand square feet. Of that required fifteen, uh, thousand square feet of commercial space on site. Really so that those, not to say that there can't be more of it, but we don't want that necessarily to count towards the total of that required commercial use on site. But there's still opportunity for that maybe larger restaurant or bakery or something. It's more kind of that gathering point. The, everybody can kind of centralize around. Um, that, and that's the entirety of our residential uses. So they're pretty broad. Um, and provided they meet one of those criteria, it's really the only thing that's left out is single-family residential units. And looking at single-family kind of standalone units, they didn't seem to quite match with the character that we've been hearing as kind of the identity. That's not to say that they can't be cited immediately next to these zones in a residential zone. But these are a little bit higher intensity styles of development that don't quite lend themselves to single-family. But pretty much anything else beyond that would be an allowed use. Anything on residential?
Uh, it's gonna be under the state, same state requirements of the House Bill. Uh, eleven ten related to the middle housings, like certain units will have to be affordable, or?
There are gonna be some affordability. Uh, there was affordability discussion, uh, with council as well. Um, and looking at ways to introduce affordability requirements, uh, depending on the amount of residential that goes into these locations. A lot of the state bills that are coming down are based on parcel, uh, right now. So a lot of these sites typically are a single larger commercial parcel, parcel, sorry. Uh, so some of them may not apply as directly as they may apply in more of a res- purely residential district. Um, that's not to say that there aren't opportunities for kind of the creation of additional affordable housing. Uh, but a lot of those bills that are kind of more targeted towards residential, uh, won't necessarily carry over into the commercial districts. But after your understanding of all.
Some of the live work, some of the live work spaces might be pretty affordable too, I would think.
Typically, the style of residential, uh, development that goes into kind of mixed-use, commercial-style developments. Tends to be more on the affordable side of things. That's not to say that we can't, uh, include additional code or language that further promotes that. Or further requirements, or requires that. But yeah, a lot of those, I guess those that are coming down aren't necessarily a direct match for these districts. But they are for other districts. We're just not looking at them so much tonight. Um, from there, we move into a pretty broad list of just general commercial types of uses. Uh, and again, instead of trying to anticipate and list everyone, uh, we have bigger kind of umbrella categories. So medical and health services, uh, community and civic facilities, commercial uses, professional services, offices, group pubs, public houses. Um, the kind of primary, uh, grocery stores, and then I come back to the drive-throughs in a second. Uh, eating and drinking establishment, all types of commercial, uh, uses, provided they are gonna meet our design elements that we'll talk about later. So as long as they kind of meet the character of these districts and kind of are in alignment with that style of development. There's pretty loose requirements on a specific type of business that you're allowed here within that kind of umbrella of commercial types of business that makes sense. Um, the one that I wanted to come back to is the drive-through. So, drive-through we listed as a accessory use to pharmacies, bakeries, cafes, and coffee shops specifically. Uh, reason being is that we don't want the, a drive-through to be the primary component of a business that's cited within these locations. So, uh, and the other component there that we added is that, uh, any location that has a drive-through also has to have kind of an in-person component to them. So I really encourage that local kind of gathering and that kind of character that's more smaller scale, not so much for regional draw, but more of a local draw. That these districts are intended to really kind of meet. Um, so that's drive-throughs. Any questions on commercial uses in a general sense?
Still wondered about the traffic that some of our commercial, you know, as, as we allow development, like in the Hawks Prairie area. It's max, yeah, that, that whole area. How, how does that affect our, our planning for future? You know, because we have to plan for future intersections on I five. Such as Carpenter Road maybe, or, or further downward Cabela's is, et cetera.
So this is a pretty high level as far as the code. And then, so this kind of encompasses all of our different neighborhood commercial districts. And then anytime a individual development would come along and look to site within one of these districts, that's kind of typically when we take a look at the transportation stuff. And we'd also look at all of the adjacent roads and all the supporting infrastructure and figure out at that time, based on the proposed use that's going in. Uh, what adjustments or changes might need to happen as far as the roadways to support that intended use. Uh, and that's all.
What level is that at?
One more time?
Uh, what level is that at? Like if you're approving a, a new industrial complex.
That's the casino. Is that what you're thinking of? Cause you said Cabela's, I thought you were thinking of the casino.
Yeah.
Cabela's is sporting goods.
No, then that's where the casino's gonna go.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, next to it.
I thought that's why you're asking.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, you have to be able to handle.
Okay, if I can answer your question, it's still at the permitting stage. It's still at the, the land use application stage is when the, the traffic impacts are looked at. So when do we actually get an application for individual use? There, there's an analysis that's done. And depending on the project, it has to do a different level of analysis that shows how many trips the project generates. And then based on that, the, you know, the, the mitigation to offset those impacts and those kinds of things. So it's got at the permitting stage. Uh, in, in general, we have long-range plans. I talked about the transportation element, the talks that, you know, generally shows where our future roadway or roads are gonna go and those kinds of things. Um, as far as like the interchanges and those, that's, that's more kind of federal highway planning. So that's done at a, a federal or state level with, uh, our involvement, but we don't necessarily get to say when the interchange is gonna work on I five. Um, our, our, our view is our, our local streets. So, uh, you know, just, just for awareness, we, um, went through a process with that diverging diamond interchange within cross I five. To look at the, the different justifications for different interchanges there. And at least in the probably fifteen to twenty year period, there won't be another interchange at Carpenter of the area. So the federal government has basically dictated that there need no more interchanges on I five if they can ever help it. So.
Really? Yeah.
So.
The federal or the state?
What's that?
The federal or the state?
The, the fed, uh, yeah, that's, yeah, the federal highway administration and the ones that control, you know, who can cover that, who can't off of, uh, off I five. And how to change this, they can get built, so.
So not to get too far off your agenda, but does that mean the approval with the new Missquali casino at the Cabela's site? Will all funnel through the diverging diamond and, and those traffic circles there?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and, um, you know, you, this is getting way off track.
Sorry, I, I do that to people.
To, to complicate it even more is now that it's being put in the tribal trust, then, you know, the city has very little avenues. That we have to be able to, you know, to require things like traffic mitigation fees or, or, you know, those kinds of things. So, uh, you know, they don't, they're not gonna be following up from any process. So, you know, it's, it's sovereign, private land at that point. And so they operate, operate, well-operated at, as such. And so, yeah, they'll be, um, it'll be largely, you know, successful. Well, our existing transportation.
The diversion diamond is amazing, but, you know, that circle's already matched with Starbucks and-
Yeah.
Mod.
Yeah.
And all that still speaks me up when I drive down there. I, I feel a year to.
Yeah.
Vol.
I think most people will get off the first one at Main Street. Uh, you know, that's the closest one to I five. There's Main Street.
Yeah, with that, Red and Watson.
Anyway, that's way, that's, uh, that was a-
I, I just, I keep part of planning because we would have to look at, okay, our streets are already getting out of hand and laced.
So at this point, you know, where we, we can consider that, but like, you know, this is really looking at the ladies' side of, of, you know, the codes of regulation. And so we're really looking at things like zoning. So what is an allowed use, what's not allowed? And then the dimensional standards associated with what can be built on the sites. Uh, and, and then, you know, at a higher level, we could look at some of the transportation impacts that some of those uses create. But really when it comes down to it, those things are looked at at the permitting level, um, when the actual development application is, isn't in.
I, I have sort of a dumb question, but if we have one of those, um, live work spaces in one of these places. Are we then obligated to provide, or should we provide, um, parking that is not parking for the businesses that are there? So if I have an office there, I mean, you know, it, it seems to me that if there are several live work spaces, that could be a bit of a problem.
I think, you know, what we're seeing mostly with live work is that right now they're very, they're flexible. So it could be, you know, portion of basically somebody's living space that they're using for, you know, an office or a single air salon, barber.
Right.
Single chair, you know, and so they're not-
So if I open a tech prep business and I decide I'm gonna live in the back half of, you know, it's a one-bedroom condo or something in that.
I think most of those right now are done just basically through the guest parking park.
Okay.
Well, I don't think there's any, I'm not hearing from any of the-
Anybody that that's an issue, okay.
That's asking for more parking, it's a small, I think they're, you know, they're, they're relatively, um, the number of, that we have are relatively small. In comparison to the rest of the development. And so, and you wouldn't really notice a, a, an uptick in traffic or cars parked as a result of the work. You know, they're there.
Good. Thanks.
Uh, and now getting into the fun one, which really kind of started this whole thing. Um, I did add some yellow highlights, which are revisions that are different from the draft that you all have in front of you. And those revisions are based on discussions that we had with council. Um, so gasoline, uh, fueling stations was a big kind of driver of why we started looking at this from the very beginning. Um, there's one thing that we, or, so currently where we sit today, there is a gasoline fueling. There's out on the corner of Hawks Prairie, there, one of our neighborhood commercial districts currently has a gas station in it. Uh, we also have another vested project at, at Merdy Market. And what we want to accomplish is, uh, updated codes, but at the same time, we don't want to, uh, make something that's already existing or permitted use. Uh, illegal by the adoption of this. So as they come back in for additional permits in the future, they're still allowed to maintain their businesses. To do things like upkeep, so they're not required to kind of slowly abandon them over time. So we wanna set, uh, updated code that still kind of maintains the opportunity for existing sites to keep operating. But at the same time, uh, be responsive to the feedback that we've received, uh, through this process. So the way that we approach this is kind of twofold. One, uh, throughout this process, we heard that grocery stores were first and foremost really, uh, the biggest priority, um, for the community in these districts. So a lot of, uh, commercially, uh, grocery store developers look for sites where they can also include a gas station component with them. So the code is currently updated, or the draft that we have in front of us includes, uh, the potential for gas stations as an accessory use. To a grocery store. Uh, that's one avenue to gain a gas station on a neighborhood commercial district. Uh, with this draft code. Uh, the other avenue would be if you are one point five miles away from an existing gas station. And that metric there actually effectively eliminates all neighborhood commercial districts from being able to put. Uh, gas station onsite, except for the existing two that are already in place, unless you're also including a grocery store with that development. Um, if one of those were to potentially go away, there might be a scenario where a new gas station could come in at that point, provided it still maintains. Uh, the other criteria that's listed associated with this. Uh, that other criteria includes, uh, a limitation on the number of fueling stations. So really, these are still intended to be smaller in kind of character. Um, one of the recommendations from the council last night was moving from two fueling stations, uh, to four fueling stations. Which effectively goes from servicing four vehicles at a time to eight vehicles at a time, if you think about both sides of a individual fuel station. So still comparatively small to, uh, uh, traditional gas station, uh, but a slight increase there. And then the other line below that.
I, I just want to push back on that.
That's not slight to me. That's not slight to me, or-
That's not slight to me or reflective of the feedback. It it doesn't really address the tenor of the feedback that um was given from the community or even. Spurred all the momentum around this entire exercise a year ago or more.
Hmm.
Um and if you match. That desire to not have anything to do with gas stations and neighborhoods. With the literal feedback that I think you shared with us from the surveys. Um it wasn't people asking for a safe way or a friend Meyer grocery stores. How many times did we laugh about um they kept saying that Trader Joe's? Everybody wants a Trader Joe's, no gas stations with Trader Joe's. The intention of asking for convenient grocery was literally grocery, good fresh food. Um being able to get. Quality products that were there for the purposes of nutrition, of convenience, not. Not an add on. So I think to separate those two intentions from the neighborhood feedback. Is doing a disservice to the entire exercise.
I had a question as far as the uh. So I gather the two to four fueling stations able to serve more than, not more. Than four to eight vehicles at any one time. I used to work for CFN, Commercial Fuel Network. As I represented, they should be all over the United States and I'd evaluate stations. The the amount of margin in fuel is amazingly low. Yeah. So what you're basically doing in there is saying, no, you can't build one. Because. They the investment that they're putting into these gas stations is a minimum of two point five million. You know, so to to get the return on their investment. You know, staff it, et cetera, pumps, and that's not even. Your pumps or your. Your uh fees. To be at an Arco or Chevron or whatever. Um. Why, why such a low vehicle at any one time? Cause it should be more dependent from the site. You know, if you've got a site out in the middle of nowhere, you know, that you plan to have a bunch of development of commercial buildings.
Neighborhood adjacent, that was not the issue.
I understood.
Creating a commercial zone from, you know, a wilderness, this was about what fits properly within. Existing neighborhood.
But but most of the wilderness, like for instance, if you're looking at south of Britley Parkway, well, be north of Britley Parkway there. That's kind of a a desert area, you know, with developing commercial buildings going in like crazy. But there's also going to be residential in that area as well, cause there already is, they're kind of converging on each other. Is that correct?
We're talking about very specific geographic areas.
Oh, for one specific.
Right.
There's only eight, there's only eight of them in the city and they're, you know, only in the neighborhood of, I don't know, but half of me through the. Five or six, maybe the largest. So, you know, these are very small neighborhood oriented centers, but you know, in various distributed geographic areas around the city, so.
You do have a question about the definition of a grocery store.
Yeah, could we go back for a minute? We have the D I P with us, who could speak to what happened last night? How did the council reconcile? The intentions that everybody knew were being expressed of a Trader Joe's of. Um I can't think of another brand, that's what everyone always talks about. Um Whole Foods, right?
Thank you.
Whole Foods or Walgreens. That was that the constantly expressed desire and then our recommendations, though. Car amendments and station rounds. How would, how would we come up with something?
Yeah, so so I can, I can offer a little bit of context. The four fueling stations is currently what Meridian Market is putting in. Um is still lower than what exists out on Yell Highway, the Chevron. Uh I think that one actually has. I think nine, which is a total of eighteen vehicles.
That was never a really benchmark for right across the street from a car for someone's backyard in my.
So the the four also, we have four additional. Uh neighborhood commercial districts within our urban growth area, two of those actually have gas stations on them. Or directly adjacent to them, and they also have four pumps each. So it was kind of that, uh definitely a reduction from. The conditional use that didn't have a limitation on the number of fueling stations, so it is providing a number when it previously exists. That number is lower than. Uh some gas stations that are going to other places, recognizing that these are neighborhood and kind of intended character. Um so that's some of where that came from, but.
It just almost feels like they're still holding up Meridian Market as as a benchmark and that's. We're trying to never.
And I, yeah, from the community side of things, when you're doing broad scale outreach. That uh definitely the Trader Joe's, the Spuds, the. A lot of the examples that were given were not uh types of grocery stores that traditionally had gas stations associated with them. Uh we have heard some feedback as well from developers that currently own a couple of design developed sites. And when they've been reaching out to uh grocery store type entities, some of the feedback that they've received as part of those conversations. Has included the request for uh that gas station component, so there's some of that feedback coming from that side as well. Um but really, it's it's coming down to what we're hearing, uh what you guys are kind of thinking, uh what council's thinking as far as the direction that we go. Um yeah, trying to come to that, that what what makes sense in that. Uh middle, middle ground there that everybody can kind of live with. Uh I will circle back around to that one point five uh mile limitation, so outside of the two that currently exist. Unless a grocery store is coming in, which there are a few locations that really make sense for that within our neighborhood commercial districts. The scenario where a gas station comes in at all. In any, any of these uh districts moving forward is very slim without one of the existing ones going away. Um. So I guess we can caveat it a bit with that, but there is still a lot of feedback that we received around this subject, so.
I just, I just have a question in terms of the definition of a grocery store. For example, would it, would a seven eleven. Quote unquote convenience store, like the one that's on the corner just built them, would that qualify as a grocery store?
So in this definition, we explicitly said, or intentionally I should say, said full service and every single.
Full service.
Once, every time we reference a grocery store, we say full service and. In that definition, a seven eleven type of use would not.
Would not qualify, okay.
These would be things of the scale of, I've got a minimum probably in the Spuds range or. Something in the Sprouts range or of that.
Yeah.
There is probably the target uh scale and development that would really make sense within these these districts. So yeah, Coop is another great example of how that kind of need would be there. The type of use that would do a great job of kind of succeeding within these districts.
So I'd like to kind of get us moving so we can.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The rest of this tonight, um yeah, before we do, I just wanna come back to the the fueling station of Byron. Um so you've got a, you know, based on the council, you know, they they provided some recommendation last night. This ultimately is not the the council's decision or recommendation at this point, this is a planning commission's draft. Built that you all will take forward to the the community for feedback. What is the planning commission's preference on? Um, you know, if 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 it's a. You know, feeling station question, is preference to say as. Those originally by staff to fuel stations with more vehicles in time, or do you wanna look at doing something else?
I think based on what Hans just said, it's absolutely moot. It's already a one point five miles, I don't think it's really a discussion that really needs to take high priority.
Okay.
That's just my personal opinion.
I'd like to see the numbers reduced. And if that stops someone from having a business interest of opening something like a grocery store because that's there. Then they don't belong in the community that we're trying to create going forward.
Well, what are you trying to create? Are you trying to create places where everyone can live and work? Or are we going to be hyper focused on one small element of a really grand picture, which is. It's kind of, yeah, like the, the, are we gonna consolidate those housing zones or not? It doesn't seem like it's something that's really affecting, but. Sorry.
Yes, I mean, that's, that's, we're here tonight to have this discussion.
Yeah, but it seems like every single community outreach is hyper focused on a gas station. There's so much more to Lacey than whether there's a gas.
It's done so much damage.
There's so much other damage, there's people who are losing homes, there's people who are in the street who are being shoved into hotels. There is so much loss and stress and. Uh hurt in our community, I think in other areas that I I I I think it's rather privileged to be focused on a gas station. I'm sorry to say that, I don't know if that's offensive, but um I I think it's really sad when. There's no, you know, the people are talking about. Establishing generational wealth and there's no homes to purchase that are affordable, there's um rents that have absolutely. No measure, so it's just, it's really hard to listen to gas station after gas station after gas station argument from. One segment of the community, you know, it's. There's so much more going on. I guess that's, that's a different sort of thing, sorry.
No, it's it's a segment of the community that's made um deliberate investment to where they live and to the betterment of overall Lacey. To have those homes there and to see that compromise means you won't have that level staying necessarily. Um and there's a lot of good that happens from that level of residential investment. Uh the detriment is it's.
But what, but what, we're not arguing gas station or no gas station.
Oh, it's just talking about the number of pumps.
Yeah.
And if two and four makes it less attractive to a developer, I think that's, that's a good thing. But it's based on a year's worth of community feedback.
It's completely moot, he said that within one and a half miles, it's not gonna happen. So it's like saying, why don't you build, I don't know, a a beach resort for people to come here to Lacey to hang out. On the beach in the middle of winter, it's not something that's gonna happen.
Why not have multiple layers of assurances?
Oh, good God, I do, I'm so sorry, I'm gonna walk away at this point, I'm sorry, I should be. Able to do this, but. Way. Arguing about a moot gas station at this point is. Beyond my capacity. Forgive me, sorry.
That's what we agreed to last night.
Okay.
I thought we agreed to. That there would be. Two pumps accessible from.
Both sides.
Both sides.
That was, what was initially presented?
For being a maximum of four vehicles.
Hmm.
That looks to me like it's adding irons.
Same, that's what I read from that.
And eight vehicles.
Yes.
Yeah, I, that was the discussion that I heard uh from meeting last night. Uh if that doesn't match your recollection, we can definitely come back to it. Um I did rewatch the meeting again today to really make sure that I got all the notes right.
Right.
Um after we talked about it, there were two subjects that came up, one was the increase from two to four. Um reason being is that that style or that scale of development, gas station just really isn't being constructed anywhere. Um the the conversation revolved around that, those kind of a nineties level of development when we're looking at gas stations and. In the last forty years, nobody's really building a two pump gas station, so. Whether or not we allowed it at that point doesn't really make sense one way or the other, so that was kind of where that discussion came from at that time. Uh and then from there, it transitioned into a discussion about. The existing two gas stations and making sure that whatever we did put into the code didn't eliminate them from being permitted. Um so that's. Where I heard that guidance from, um but. It it sounds like we're here tonight to really hear the. So.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry, can we stop the screen share?
Yeah, for sure.
I I'm not sure that the um. What the community feeling is, because I I I haven't heard it, if there's a, if if there is a gas station. Associated with a grocery store, the grocery store will not put in a grocery store. If it can't have X number of fueling stations. The question to the community then becomes. How badly do you want a grocery store?
Then they'll travel over I five, is my understanding. I mean, we heard from an eighteen hundred home community in response to that survey.
Who said? We wanna, who, who said we wanna.
Want a Trader Joe's or Spuds or.
Right.
Um Whole Foods.
Right, but but we cannot govern what kind of.
So I I think what you heard them say is we're not willing to trade off. The outcry against the Meridian Market project was demonstrating, we don't wanna trade off. Um, you know, having this in a neighborhood. I think that's, that's what the message was at every hearing and the, you know.
But I, but what the message also was, we don't want gas stations, period, right?
In neighborhoods, yeah.
In neighborhood.
We like them where they are, out on highways.
Okay.
So at this point, uh I'll make a little bit of a suggestion here, which is, um, you know, it's getting. After eight o'clock, we're more than two hours into this and and we've got. You know, brand new planning commission members that are just familiarizing themselves with this issue.
Right.
Uh we've got some obvious kind of disagreement between. Just between the council and the the planning commission on on some of the issue. Um and I think we as staff need to take a little bit more time, probably need to take a little bit of a a step back and and. And spend some more time with you all on on development of the code before we go back out to the public and. We're not gonna be able to get there tonight on this, and so what I'm gonna suggest is that. Uh we take, we staff takes the next month, instead of going out to the public on this, we continue to develop the information to the planning commission. And um and and bring this to a future meeting where we're able to continue the discussion and and. Obviously, we don't wanna, we want a fairly unified planning commission going into a a public hearing. And I think if we don't have that, then, you know, that that could be difficult to, you know, convey to the public, you know, and and. Get around all those issues, so that would be my suggestion is is I think that we've heard, we've gotten. At least through kind of the permitted items at this point. Um and, you know, we've got some some questions that we may need to come back to you and and some additional information that we may need to develop to. Uh to get us uh to the next stage, and so at this point, I think, you know, we may just. Best and just kind of putting end in the discussion and coming back to it in a, in a meeting in a month.
Ryan, can I? I'm sorry, for those, for the new planning commission members, my name is Grant Beth, I'm the Planning Development Services Manager.
It was hard to hear you, Grant.
Hold on, Grant, it's hard to hear you, I'll turn you up.
Better?
Right now.
This better?
Yeah, a little bit.
Great. And sorry, I'm having headphone issues, but. Um and I apologize for not being on screen, but I, but Ryan gave me the flu, so I'm not feeling very well. What we're, what what I'm seeing tonight is, is what. We struggle with every day as planners, which is. There, there are no easy solutions for for hard problems. And everything is related to everything. And I appreciate the discussion that we're having tonight and the debate. And the end game is to make. Compromises and make. Uh make it better for our community as a whole. So again, I I'm echoing Ryan's recommendation that we kind of continue this discussion. And continue to have discussion because it's important. Um we heard a lot from. The Meridian Market thing, but that is not the only thing in the world as far as Lacey. Uh Lacey's future. So we, so I'm just asking everybody to appreciate the other point of view. To articulate it, discuss it without, um the discussion without being disagreeable. And getting to an end game that balances everything, because again, if you push in one place on the building. It's gonna pop out someplace else. And we need to have that overall. Viewpoint of what's best for the entire community. And I appreciate you for for the work that you're doing. And thank you, Councilmember Cox, for for attending a second meeting in a row.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
With that.
I know, I am, I'm, I'm trying to pack up. I think I'm folded. Um just the only announcement I have is to remind you that we're meeting um with the council uh two weeks from yesterday. So and and then our next regular meeting, which would be the next day, is canceled. So from others than that, and that we have a new chair and vice chair, which is great. And uh and your job is to convince them that this is a wonderful opportunity. So thank you all very much. We are adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah.